The auditory to fix the sound system because we can barely hear one another, Mr. Speaker. I move that to suspension, Mr. Speaker.
One minute suspension.
Mr. Speaker, on day twenty-nine, twenty-nine. Barzaga, Batawil, Bautista Bendigan, Belaro, Belmonte, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Maria Vida, Brosas, Bulut Bigtang, Cagas, Calderon, Calixtrubiano, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kari, Casilau, Castelo, Castrofranz, Castrofredinil, Katamco, Cayetano, Celeste, Serafica, Ciriles, Chavez, Chipeco, Co, Cohuango, Coliantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Cosalan, Crisologo, Cuah, Cuarezma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa, De Jesus, Defensor, Delmar, Del Rosario, Del Osomontalia, Demoporo Abdullah, Demoporo Muhammad Khalid, Brano, Noel, Nograles, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyaon, Ominal, Ocampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vininola, Paciao, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichay, Pico, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Premisiyas Agabas, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Rolampagos, Rivilla, Rowapuno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roque, Sackdalan, Sagarbaria, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbango, Salo, Salon, Sambar, Sandoval, Sangkopan, Santos Rector, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar Meri, Velasco, Velasco Cartera, Veloso, Vergara, Villia Fuerte, Villanueva, Villara Suárez, Villarica, Villarin, Violago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milensio, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo, Zarate Zubiri.
With one hundred responding to the affirmative, zero negative, the motion is carried.
Mr. Speaker. Do you know the concerns of the Honorable Atienza?
Congressman Atienza, you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. On the matter just taken up, because of its timeliness, necessity, usefulness, this representation would like to request a sponsor to allow us to be co-sponsor of said measure.
Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, we do not interpose any objection.
There is a motion by Congressman Atienza that considered sponsors of the bill, there being no objection, the motion is carried.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Another point, Mr. Speaker, on a question of privilege, the sound system is defective and we don't seem to be hearing each other correctly. We propose that the sound man be taken to task, allow him to repair it now.
Di, Elago, Inverga, Erise, Ergel, Ermitabuhain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Josebio Evardone, Farínias, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Feriol Pascual, Florendo, Flores, Fortune, Fortuno, Fuentebelia, Garbin, Garcés, García Gwendolin, García José Enrique, García Albano, Garin Richard, Garin Charon, Gasitaya, Gachalian, Heron, Go Ana Cristina, Go Mark, Gómez, Gonzaga, González Alexandria, González Aurelio, González Fernando, Rosetta, Gulyas, Hernández Ferdinand, Hernández Paul, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halushos, Javier, Co, Conhun, Labadlabad, Laxson, Lagman, Lanete, Laugán, Lasatin, Liachón, Li, Limcaichong, Lobrigat, López Benher, López Carlo, López Manuel, Loyola, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Magundadato Suarto, Magundadato Sagid, Marcoleta, Marcos, Marinho, Marquez, Martínez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyaon, Ominal, Ocampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vininola, Paciao, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichay, Pico, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Premisiyas Agabas, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Rolampagos, Rivilla, Rowapuno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roque, Sackdalan, Sagarbaria, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbango, Salo, Salon, Sambar, Sandoval, Sangkopan, Santos Rector, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar Meri, Sevillano, Semasiaw, Silverio, Singson, Suansing Estrelitas, Suansing Horacio, Suárez, Si Alvarado, Tambunting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Teves, Tiyango, Ting, Tiño, Tolentino, Trenyas, Tugna, Tupasti, Umali, Unabya, Ungab, Uniko, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Bareta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Vilarde, Velasco, Velasco Cartera, Veloso, Vergara, Villia Fuerte, Villanueva, Villara Suárez, Villarica, Villarin, Violago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milensio, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo, Zarate Zubiri.
With one hundred eighty-three responding to the affirmative, zero negative, House Bill nine-two-zero-four is hereby approved. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill number nine-zero-six-five and request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of said measure. So move, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion for the approval of House Bill number nine-zero-six-five and the Secretary General is hereby directed to call the roll.
House Bill number nine-zero-six-five, an act institutionalizing support mechanisms and protection for public school teachers and personnel in matters of student discipline for classroom management.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we approve on third reading House Bill number nine-zero-six-five and request the Secretary General be directed to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to approve House Bill number nine-zero-six-five. The Secretary General is hereby directed to call the roll.
Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill nine-zero-six-five, Abaya, Abayon, Abellanosha, Abu, Abueg, Charon, Acop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adjong, Advinkula, Agarau, Agabau, Albano, Alkala, Alejano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Ang, Angara Castilio, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino Magsaisai, Aragones, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atsensa, Aumentado, Bagau, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barber's, Barzaga, Batawil, Bautista Bendigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Maria Vida, Brosas, Bulut Bigtang, Cagas, Calderon, Calixtrubiano, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kari, Casilau, Castelo, Castrofranz, Castrofredinil, Katamco, Cayetano, Celeste, Serafica, Ciriles, Chavez, Chipeco, Co, Cohuango, Coliantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Cosalan, Crisologo, Cuah, Cuarezma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa, De Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor Delmar, Del Rosario, Del Osomontalia, Demoporo Abdullah, Demoporo Muhammad Khalid, Duavit Durano, Di, Elago, Inverga, Erise, Ergel, Ermitabuhain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Josebio Evardone, Farínias, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Feriol Pascual, Florendo, Flores, Fortune, Fortuno, Fuentebelia, Garbin, Garcés, García Gwendelin, García José Enrique, García Albano, Garin Richard, Garin Charon, Gasitaya, Gachalian, Heron, Go Ana Cristina, Go Mark, Gómez, Gonzaga, González Alexandria, González Aurelio, González Fernando, Rosetta, Gulyas, Hernández Ferdinand, Hernández Paul, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halushos, Javier, Co, Conhun, Labadlabad, Laxson, Lagman, Lanete, Laugán, Lasatin, Liachón, Li, Limcaichong, Lobrigat, López Benher, López Carlo, López Manuel, Loyola, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Magundadato Suarto, Magundadato Sagid, Marcoleta, Marcos, Marinho, Marquez, Martínez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyaon, Ominal, Ocampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vininola, Paciao, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichay, Pico, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Premisiyas Agabas, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Rolampagos, Rivilla, Rowapuno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roque, Sackdalan, Sagarbaria, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbango, Salo, Salon, Sambar, Sandoval, Sangkopan, Santos Rector, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar Meri, Sevillano, Semasiaw, Silverio, Singson, Suansing Estrelitas, Suansing Horacio, Suárez, Si Alvarado, Tambunting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Teves, Tiyango, Ting, Tiño, Tolentino, Trenyas, Tugna, Tupasti, Umali, Unabya, Ungab, Uniko, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Bareta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Vilarde, Velasco, Velasco Cartera, Veloso, Vergara, Villia Fuerte, Villanueva, Villara Suárez, Villarica, Villarin, Violago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milensio, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo, Zarate Zubiri.
With one hundred eighty-three responding to the affirmative, zero negative, House Bill number nine-zero-six-five is approved on third reading. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill number nine-one-four-six and request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of said measure. So move, Mr. Speaker.
The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of House Bill nine-one-six-four-six.
House Bill number nine-one-four-six, an act institutionalizing the convergence strategy for sustainable rural development and providing the implementing mechanisms, therefore.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we approve on third reading House Bill number nine-one-four-six and request the Secretary General be directed to call the roll of the members for nominal voting. So move, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to approve House Bill number nine-one-four-six on third reading. The Secretary General is hereby directed to call the roll.
Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill number nine-one-four-six, Abaya, Abayon, Abellanosha, Abu, Abueg, Charon, Acop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adjong, Advinkula, Agarau, Agabau, Albano, Alkala, Alejano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Ang, Angara Castilio, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino Magsaisai, Aragones, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atsensa, Aumentado, Bagau, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barber's, Barzaga, Batawil, Bautista Bendigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Maria Vida, Brosas, Bulut Bigtang, Cagas, Calderon, Calixtrubiano, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kari, Casilau, Castelo, Castrofranz, Castrofredinil, Katamco, Cayetano, Celeste, Serafica, Ciriles, Chavez, Chipeco, Co, Cohuango, Coliantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Cosalan, Crisologo, Cuah, Cuarezma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa, De Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor Delmar, Del Rosario, Del Osomontalia, Demoporo Abdullah, Demoporo Muhammad Khalid, Duavit Durano, Di, Elago, Inverga, Erise, Ergel, Ermitabuhain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Josebio Evardone, Farínias, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Ferrer Luis, Feriol, Florendo, Flores, Fortune, Fortuno, Fuentebelia, Garbin, Garcés, García Gwendolin, García José Enrique, García Albano, Garin Richard, Garin Charon, Gasitaya, Gachalian, Heron, Go Ana Cristina, Go Mark, Gómez, Gonzaga, González Alexandria, González Aurelio, González Fernando, Rosetta, Gulyas, Hernendas Ferdinand, Hernández Paul, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halushos, Javier, Co, Conhun, Labadlabad, Laxson, Lagman, Lanete, Laugán, Lasatin, Liachón, Li, Limcaichong, Lobrigat, López Benher, López Carlo, López Manuel, Loyola, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Magundadato Suarto, Magundadato Sagid, Marcoleta, Marcos, Marinho, Marquez, Martínez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyaon, Ominal, Ocampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vininola, Paciao, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichay, Pico, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Premisiyas Agabas, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Rolampagos, Rivilla, Rowapuno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roque, Sackdalan, Sagarbaria, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbango, Salo, Salon, Sambar, Sandoval, Sangkopan, Santos Rector, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar Meri, Sevillano, Semasiaw, Silverio, Singson, Suansing Estrelita, Suansing Horacio, Suárez, Si Alvarado, Tambunting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Teves, Tejada, Tiyango, Ting, Tiño, Tolentino, Trenyas, Tugna, Tupasti, Umali, Unabya, Ungab, Uniko, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Bareta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Vilarde, Vilasco, Velasco Cartera, Veloso, Vergara, Villia Fuerte, Villanueva, Villara Suárez, Villarica, Villarin, Violago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milensio, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo, Zarate Zubiri.
With one hundred eighty-three responding to the affirmative, zero negative, House Bill number nine-one-four-six is approved on third reading. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill number nine-one-nine-nine and request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the said measure. So move, Mr. Speaker.
The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of House Bill number nine-one-nine-nine.
House Bill nine-one-nine-nine, an act defining the rights and fundamental freedoms of human rights defenders, declaring state responsibilities and instituting effective mechanisms for the protection and promotion of these rights and freedoms.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we approve on third reading House Bill number nine-one-nine-nine and request the Secretary General be directed to call the roll for nominal voting.
There is a motion to approve House Bill number nine-one-nine-nine and the Secretary General is hereby requested to read the title and call the roll.
Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill nine-one-nine-nine, Abaya, Abayon, Abellanosha, Abu, Abueg, Charon, Acop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adjong, Advinkula, Agarau, Agabau, Albano, Alkala, Alejano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Ang, Angara Castilio, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino Magsaisai, Aragones, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atsensa, Aumentado, Bagau, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barber's, Barzaga, Batawil, Bautista Bendigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Maria Vida, Brosas, Bulut Bigtang, Cagas, Calderon, Calixtrubiano, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kari, Casilau, Castelo, Castrofranz, Castrofredinil, Katamco, Cayetano, Celeste, Serafica, Ciriles, Chavez, Chipeco, Co, Cohuango, Coliantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Cosalan, Crisologo, Cuah, Cuarezma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa, De Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor Delmar, Del Rosario, Del Osomontalia, Demoporo Abdullah, Demoporo Muhammad Khalid, Duavit Durano, Di, Elago, Inverga, Erise, Ergel, Ermitabuhain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Josebio Evardone, Farínias, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Feriol Pascual, Florendo, Flores, Fortune, Fortuno, Fuentebelia, Garbin, Garcés, García Gwendolin, García José Enrique, García Albano, Garin Richard, Garin Charon, Gasitaya, Gachalian, Heron, Go Ana Cristina, Go Mark, Gómez, Gonzaga, González Alexandria, González Aurelio, González Fernando, Rosetta, Gulyas, Hernández Ferdinand, Hernández Paul, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halushos, Javier, Co, Conhun, Labadlabad, Laxson, Lagman, Lanete, Laugán, Lasatin, Liachón, Li, Limcaichong, Lobrigat, López Benher, López Carlo, López Manuel, Loyola, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Magundadato Suarto, Magundadato Sagid, Marcoleta, Marcos, Marinho, Marquez, Martínez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyaon, Ominal, Ocampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vinny, Paciao, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandaya, Pichay, Pico, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Premisiyas Agabas, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Rolampagos, Rivilla, Rowapuno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roque, Sackdalan, Sagarbaria, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbango, Salo, Salon, Sambar, Sandoval, Sangkopan, Santos Rector, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar Meri, Sevillano, Semasiaw, Silverio, Singson, Suansing Estrelitas, Suansing Horacio, Suárez, Si Alvarado, Tambunting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Teves, Tiyango, Ting, Tiño, Tolentino, Trenyas, Tugna, Tupasti, Umali, Unabya, Ungab, Uniko, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Bareta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Vilarde, Velasco, Velasco Cartera, Veloso, Vergara, Villia Fuerte, Villanueva, Villara Suárez, Villarica, Villarin, Violago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milensio, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo, Zarate Zubiri.
With one hundred eighty-three responding to the affirmative, zero negative, House Bill number nine-one-nine-nine is approved on third reading. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill number nine-one-nine-two and request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the said measure.
The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of nine-one, House Bill number nine-one-nine-two.
House Bill number nine-one-nine-two, an act declaring Pagasa Island and its adjoining islands of Parola, Quota, and Panata in the municipality of Calayaan, Provinzo Palawan, as echoed tourism destinations and protected areas and appropriating funds, therefore.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we approve on Mr. Speaker, I move that we approve on third reading House Bill Number 9192 and request the Secretary General be directed to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to approve House Bill Number 9192 and the Secretary General is hereby directed to call the roll for nominal voting.
Roll Call of Members in consideration of House Bill Number 9192, Abaya, Abayon, Abellianosa, Abu, Abweg, Atcheron, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adjong, Advinkula, Agarau, Agabau, Albano, Alcala, Alejano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Ang, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino Magcaysay, Aragonés, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atchensa, Aumentado, Bagau, Bagatzing, Bagilat, Banal, Barbers, Bersaga, Batawil, Bautista Bendigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biazon, Biliones, Birón, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo María Vida, Brosas, Bulut Biktang, Cagas, Calderón, Calixturbiano, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kari, Casilau, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fredinil, Katamco, Cayetano, Celeste, Seráfica, Ceriles, Chávez, Chipeco, Co, Cojuanco, Coliantes, Cortés, Cortuna, Cosalan, Crisologo, Cuah, Cuarezma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Daza, de Jesús, de Venecia, defensor del mar, del Rosario, de los Montaña, de Mapur, Abdullah, de Mapur, Mohamed Khalid, Duabit, Durano, Di, Ilago, Inverga, Erise, Irigel, Hermita Buahin, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Yusebio, Evardone, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Ferriol, Florendo Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Fuente Belia, Garbin, Garcés, García Gwendolin, García Jose Enrique, García Albano, Garin Richard, Garin Sharon, Gasataya, Gatsalian, Heron, Goana Cristina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, González Alexandria, González Aurelio, González Fernando, Gorseta, Gulyas, Hernández Ferdinand, Hernández Paul, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halushos, Javier, Co, Conhun, Labad Labad, Laxon, Lagman, Danete, Laugan, Lasatin, Liatson, Li, Limcaichong, Lubrigat, López Benhor, López Carlo, López Manuel, Loyola, Makapagalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Magundadatos Sojarto, Magundadatos Sagid, Marcoleta, Marcos, Marinho, Marquez, Martínez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Noctrales, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyaon, Ominal, Ocampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vininola, Pacquiao Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Pangani Ban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pico, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primicias Agabás, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Relampagos, Rivilla, Ropapuno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodríguez Isidro, Rodríguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roque, Sackdalan, Sagarbaria, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbango, Salo, Salon, Sambar, Sandoval, Sangkopan, Santos Repto, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar Mary, Sabilliano, Semma, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Swansing Estrelita, Swansing Horacio, Suárez, Si Alvarado, Tambunting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Tevez, Chanco, Ting, Tiño, Tolentino, Trenyas, Tugna, Tupas, Ti, Umal, Unabia, Ungab, Unico, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Bareta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velarde, Velasco, Velasco Cartera, Veloso, Vergara, Villafuerte, Villanueva, Villarazuárez, Villarica, Villarin, Violago, Yap Arthur, Yap Meléxio, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo, Zarate, Zubiri.
With one hundred eighty-seven responding to the affirmative, zero negative, House Bill Number 9192 is approved on third reading. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill Number 9193 and request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the said measure.
The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of House Bill Number 9193.
House Bill Number 9193, an act declaring that the dao tree located within a pocket secondary forest in the Integrated Forest Management Agreement area of the Ipila Ranch in Bayumbong, Barangay Kugman, Kagayan de Oro, as the Kagayan de Oro Heritage Tree and a tourism attraction.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we approve on third reading House Bill Number 9193 and request the Secretary General be directed to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to approve House Bill Number 9193 and the Secretary General is hereby directed to call the roll of all the members.
Roll Call of Members in consideration of House Bill 9193, Abaya, Abayon, Abellianosa, Abu, Abweg, Atcheron, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adjong, Advinkula, Agarau, Agabau, Albano, Alcala, Alejano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Ang, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino Magcaysay, Aragonés, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atchensa, Aumentado, Bagau, Bagatzing, Bagilat, Banal, Barbers, Bersaga, Batawil, Bautista Bendigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biazon, Biliones, Birón, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo María Vida, Brosas, Bulut Biktang, Cagas, Calderón, Calixturbiano, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kari, Casilau, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fredinil, Katamco, Cayetano, Celeste, Seráfica, Ceriles, Chávez, Chipeco, Co, Cojuanco, Coliantes, Cortés, Cortuna, Cosalan, Crisologo, Cuah, Cuarezma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Daza, de Jesús, de Venecia, defensor del mar, del Rosario, de los Montaña, de Mapur, Abdullah, de Mapur, Mohamed Khalid, Duabit, Durano, Di, Ilago, Inverga, Erise, Irigel, Hermita Buahin, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Yusebio, Evardone, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Ferriol Pascual, Florendo Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Fuente Belia, Garbin, Garcés, García Gwendolin, García Jose Enrique, García Albano, Garin Richard, Garin Sharon, Gasitaya, Gatsalian, Heron, Goana Cristina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, González Alexandria, González Aurelio, González Fernando, Gorseta, Gulyas, Hernández Ferdinand, Hernández Paul, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halushos, Javier, Co, Conhun, Labad Labad, Laxon, Lagman, Danete, Laugan, Lasatin, Liatson, Li, Limcaichong, Lubrigat, López Benhor, López Carlo López Manuel, Loyola, Makapagalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Magundadatos Sojarto, Magundadatos Sagid, Marcoleta, Marcos, Marinho, Marquez, Martínez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Noctrales, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyaon, Ominal, Ocampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vininola, Pacquiao Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Pangani Ban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pico, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primicias Agabás, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Relampagos, Rivilla, Ropapuno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodríguez Isidro, Rodríguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roque, Sackdalan, Sagarbaria, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbango, Salo, Salon, Sambar, Sandoval, Sangkopan, Santos Repto, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar Mary, Sabilliano, Semma, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Swansing Estrelita, Swansing Horacio, Suárez, Si Alvarado, Tambunting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Tevez, Chanco, Ting, Tiño, Tolentino, Trenyas, Tugna, Tupas, Ti, Umal, Unabia, Ungab, Unico, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Bareta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velarde, Velasco, Velasco Cartera, Veloso, Vergara, Villafuerte, Villanueva, Villarazuárez, Villarica, Villarin, Violago, Yap Arthur, Yap Meléxio, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo, Zarate, Zubiri.
With one hundred eighty-seven responding to the affirmative, zero negative, House Bill Number 9193 is hereby approved on third reading. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill Number 9198 and request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the said measure. So move, Mr. Speaker.
The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of House Bill Number 9198.
House Bill Number 9198, an act renaming the Macan Cebu International Airport Authority to Lapulapo Cebu International Airport Authority.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we approve on third reading House Bill Number 9198 and request that the Secretary General be directed to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to approve on third reading House Bill Number 9198. The Secretary General is hereby directed to call the roll of all the members for nominal voting.
Roll Call of Members in consideration of House Bill Number 9198, Abaya, Abayon, Abellianosa, Abu, Abweg, Atcheron, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adjong, Advinkula, Agarau, Agabau, Albano, Alcala, Alejano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Ang, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino Magcaysay, Aragonés, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atchensa, Aumentado, Bagau, Bagatzing, Bagilat, Banal, Barbers, Bersaga, Batawil, Bautista Bendigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biazon, Biliones, Birón, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo María Vida, Brosas, Bulut Biktang, Cagas, Calderón, Calixturbiano, Caminero, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kari, Casilau, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fredinil, Katamco, Cayetano, Celeste, Seráfica, Ceriles, Chávez, Chipeco, Co, Cojuanco, Coliantes, Cortés, Cortuna, Cosalan, Crisologo, Cuah, Cuarezma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Daza, de Jesús, de Venecia, defensor del mar, del Rosario, de los Montaña, de Mapur, Abdullah, de Mapur, Mohamed Khalid, Duabit, Durano, Di, Ilago, Inverga, Erise, Irigel, Hermita Buahin, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Yusebio, Evardone, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Ferriol, Florendo Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Fuente Belia, Garbin, Garcés, García Gwendolin, García Jose Enrique, García Albano, Garin Richard, Garin Sharon, Gasataya, Gatsalian, Heron, Goana Cristina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, González Alexandria, González Aurelio, González Fernando, Gorseta, Gulyas, Hernández Ferdinand, Hernández Paul, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halushos, Javier, Co, Conhun, Labad Labad, Laxon, Lagman, Danete, Laugan, Lasatin, Liatson, Li, Limcaichong, Lubrigat, López Benhor, López Carlo, López Manuel, Loyola, Makapagalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Magundadatos Sojarto, Magundadatos Sagid, Marcoleta, Marcos, Marinho, Marquez, Martínez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Noctrales, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyaon, Ominal, Ocampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vininola, Pacquiao Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Pangani Ban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pico, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primicias Agabás, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Relampagos, Rivilla, Ropapuno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodríguez Isidro, Rodríguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roque, Sackdalan, Sagarbaria, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbango, Salo, Salon, Sambar, Sandoval, Sangkopan, Santos Repto, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar Mary, Sabilliano, Semma, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Swansing Estrelita, Swansing Horacio, Suárez, Si Alvarado, Tambunting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Tevez, Chanco, Ting, Tiño, Tolentino, Trenyas, Tugna, Tupas, Ti, Umal, Unabia, Ungab, Unico, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Bareta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velarde, Velasco, Velasco Cartera, Veloso, Vergara, Villafuerte, Villanueva, Villarazuárez, Villarica, Villarin, Violago, Yap Arthur, Yap Meléxio, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo, Zarate, Zubiri.
With one hundred eighty-nine members responding to the affirmative, zero negative, House Bill Number 9198 is approved on third reading. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Resolution Number 2591 and request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the said resolution. So move, Mr. Speaker.
The Secretary General is hereby requested to read the title of House Resolution 2591.
House Resolution 2591, resolution expressing the profound condolences of the House of Representatives to the family of the late Liberato P. Laos Chairperson and Chief Executive Officer of the Laos Group of Companies, the leading multi-brand car dealership business in the Philippines.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we adopt House Resolution Number 2591. So move, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to adopt House Resolution Number 2591. Do I hear any objection? There being none, the motion is carried. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, we are in receipt of a message from the Senate informing the House that the Senate passed with amendments House Bill Number 8654 entitled "An Act Mandating Public and Private Educational Institutions to Provide the Appropriate Armchairs to Left-Handed Students." Mr. Speaker, we have been advised that the Committee on Basic Education and Culture and the Committee on Higher and Technical Education, sponsors of the said House Bill as well as the author thereof, have no objections to the amendment introduced by the Senate. In view of this and in accordance with our rules, I move that we concur with the Senate amendment to House Bill Number 8654. So move, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to concur with the Senate amendment to the House Bill Number 8654. Do I hear any objection? There being none, the motion is carried. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, we are in receipt of the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee Report on the Disagreeing Provisions of House Bill Number 9051 and Senate Bill Number 2063, reorganizing and strengthening the Cooperative Development Authority. And in accordance with our rules, Mr. Speaker, I move that we ratify the said Bi-Cameral Conference Committee Report. So move, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to ratify the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee Report on the disagreeing provisions of the House Bill Number 9051 and the Senate Bill Number 2063, reorganizing and strengthening the Cooperative Development Authority. Do I hear any objection? There being none, the motion is carried. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, we are also in receipt of the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee Report on the Disagreeing Provisions of House Bill Number 6524 and Senate Bill Number 2133, further strengthening the powers and functions of the authority of the Free Board Area of Bataan. And in accordance with our rules, Mr. Speaker, I move that we ratify the said Bi-Cameral Conference Committee Report. So move, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to ratify the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee Report of the disagreeing provisions of House Bill Number 6524 and Senate Bill Number 2133. Do I hear any objection? There being none, the motion is carried. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, we are in receipt of a message from the Senate informing the House that the Senate passed with amendments House Bill Number 8370, requiring state universities and colleges to prepare and implement a land use development and infrastructure plan that shall include the construction of dormitories for students and housing sites for employees. We have been advised that the Committee on Higher and Technical Education, sponsor of the said House Bill, as well as the authors thereof, have no objection to the amendments introduced there too by the Senate and in accordance with our rules, Mr. Speaker, I move that we concur with the Senate amendments to House Bill Number 8370. So move, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion that we concur with the Senate amendments to House Bill Number 8370. Do I hear any objection? There being none, the motion is carried.
Mr. Speaker, we are in receipt of a message from the Senate informing the House that the Senate passed with amendments House Bill Number 785 entitled "An Act Establishing a Framework for the Selection of National Performing Arts Companies Designating for the Purpose Certain Performing Arts General." And we have been advised that the Committee on Basic Education and Culture and the Committee on Higher and Technical Education, the sponsor of the said House Bill, as well as the authors thereof, have no objection to the amendment introduced by the Senate. And in view of the, in view of the said, Mr. Speaker, in accordance with our rules, I move that we concur with the Senate amendment. I move that we concur with the Senate amendment to House Bill Number 7785. So move, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion that we concur with the Senate amendment to House Bill Number 775. Is there any objection? There being none, the motion is carried. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, we are in receipt of a message from the Senate informing the House that the Senate passed with amendments, House Bill Number 8177, renewing for another 25 years the franchise granted to the Raha Broadcasting Network Incorporated to construct, install, establish, operate, and maintain radio and television broadcasting stations in the Philippines. We have been advised that the Committee on Legislative Franchises, sponsor of the said House Bill as well as the authors thereof, have no objection to the amendments introduced by the Senate. And in accordance with our rules, Mr. Speaker, I move that we concur with the Senate amendment to House Bill Number 8177. So move, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion that we concur with the Senate amendment to House Bill Number 8177. Hearing no objection, the motion is carried.
Mr. Speaker, I move that this is fine session for a few minutes.
One-minute suspension. Start speed. Session resume. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, may I request that we recognize our guests, the incoming Presidents and Officers of Rotary International District 3780, under the leadership of your... of this humble representation, Madam's... uh, Mr. Speaker. May we acknowledge Past President Susette Lee, the incoming District Secretary, Chief of Staff, incoming Florian Enriquez, and the incoming Presidents Mercy Sescanyeka of RC Metro SFDM, Josie de Guzmán of RC Cobao South, Mean Isip of RC Camp Aginaldo, Violet Rojas of RC Capitunan, Maris Destor of RC Quirino, Gareth Devara of RC West Triangle, Quezon City, Edna Penyas of RC Ayala Heights, Joel Paragas of University District, Peter Val Mendoza of RC Cobao East, Omi Maliari of RC New Manila South, Renz Daus of RC Cagitingan Cobao, Imos Manglangit of RC Quezon City, Ayuni Mejía of RC Camuning Central, Nene Fabier of RC Dileman Central, Fair Matahum of RC San Bartolomé, Royli Unarse of RC Midtown Cobao, Benji Ganapan of Cosmo Qualitan Cobao, and our Chief of Staff, designate na isa pa... and Eve Lagdameyo.
Kindly rise and we would like to convey our congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Proceed.
Yes, can you suspend us again, Mr. Speaker?
Here, one-minute suspension.
Announcement, announcement please. The honorable members of the House of Representatives are reminded that there will be a pagpupugay sa mga kinatawan na ika labing pitong kongreso tomorrow, June 4, 2019, immediately after the adjournment of the third regular session at the plenary hall of the House of Representatives. Repeating announcement, the honorable members of the House of Representatives are respectfully reminded that there will be a pagpupugay sa mga kinatawan na ika labing pitong kongreso tomorrow, June 4, 2019, immediately after the adjournment of the third regular session. Thank you.
Session resume.
Mr. Speaker.
Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, may we now the... Council of the Honorable Crisologo.
May I... may I ask... may I request for a parliamentary inquiry, Mr. Speaker?
Proceed.
Uh... Parliamentary inquiry is the... Under the Constitution, members of Congress and the Senate are entitled to parliamentary immunity when session... when Congress is in session, provided that the crime attributed is less than six years. The penalty is less than six years. My question, Mr. Speaker, my parliamentary inquiry is, when... during adjournment... during adjournment of Congress, uh... does the member lose parliamentary immunity?
Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, as to the inquiry of the Honorable Crisologo, the matter is rested on Section 11 of Article 6 of the Constitution, which provides that a senator or member of the House of Representatives shall in all offenses punishable by not more than six years imprisonment, be privileged from arrest while Congress is in session. And all members should be questioned or be held liable in any other place for any speech or debate in Congress or in any committee thereof. Now, as to the question of the Honorable Crisologo, Mr. Speaker, his question refers to the immunity of each member of the House as guaranteed by the Constitution. And the question is, when does it start? Mr. Speaker, the... we have to distinguish first, when is the start of the session of the Senate and the House? And the Constitution provides that the session begins on the third Monday of July, which is that same day where the President of the Republic of the Philippines will give out its State of the Nation address. Now, the Constitution also provides that the Congress shall adjourn thirty days prior to the next Sona. And that adjournment is the sine die adjournment. Now, as to the type of adjournment, there are two kinds of adjournment, Mr. Speaker. First adjournment is the regular adjournment of the day-to-day session of the House. And that, Mr. Speaker, does not... uh... that is within the period of the regular sessions of the Congress, the first, the second, and the third regular session. Now, the only period in time which Congress or members of the Congress, meaning the House of Representatives and the Senate, uh... which is the only period in which the immunity does not apply to the members is when the, um... Congress is adjourned sine die, which is mandatory thirty days prior to the next Sona.
Does it satisfy Congressman Crisologo?
Just one additional question. In other words, Mr. Speaker, all adjournments except the adjournment for sine die, in all adjournments, members of the House and the Senate are entitled to parliamentary immunity, except in the sine die adjournment.
That is the... Majority Floor Leader.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, that is correct. The only period in time which the members loses its immunity is during the adjournment sine die.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
I hope that satisfies the gentleman from Quezon City.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the privilege hour.
There is a motion to open the privilege hour. There being no objection, the privilege hour is now open. Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, first to avail of the privilege hour is the Honorable Rosemarie Baby Arenas of the 3rd District of Pangasinan.
Representative Rosemarie Arenas, you are recognized. Please proceed.
Mr. Speaker, I condemn in the strongest possible terms the series of barbaric abuses and senseless killings of our OFWs in Kuwait, which we have silently and cowardly taken for granted for more than two decades, leading us today to one more brutal and meaningless death, that of Konstancia Dayag. Mr. Speaker, I have risen in the past on these issues, and I rise again today in more outrage, and I shall continue to rise until my voice is heard on behalf of our poor OFWs, our modern-day heroes who have become martyrs. Countless OFWs before Laiu have been victims of different kinds and levels of abuse and exploitation that are inhuman with their cruelty going beyond human endurance, stripping the victims of every thread of human dignity. The past years taught us an impeachable lesson, that every OFW deployed in Kuwait faces an uncertain future. The fact of the matter is, the laws and the culture in Kuwait does not provide, not accept, the need for enough protection for household service workers, otherwise known as domestic workers. A total of 196 Filipino workers died in Kuwait since 2016 to the present. Almost 79% of the victims have died due to physical abuse, according to overseas workers' welfare administrations. In 2017, the Philippine Embassy in Kuwait recorded 6,000 abuses, including sexual abuse and rape. The body of slain OFW, the 47-year-old Konstancia Dayag, a native of Isabela Province, who worked as a household service worker, arrived from Kuwait. Dayag started working in Kuwait in 2016 and was founded last, was founded last May 14, 2019. An autopsy report indicated she sustained various continued constitutions and hematoma in her body and had cucumbers stuffed inside her private parts. A few months before, on November 2018, the DFA expressed its condolences when a Filipino worker they refused to name died after reportedly jumping from her employer's residence in Kuwait. On the 12th of February 2018, the whole nation was shocked and outraged when OFW Joanna de Mafilis returned to the Philippines in a wading crate killed by employers. President Duterte himself called her death "a national shame" and ordered a ban on the deployment of OFWs in Kuwait, but which was lifted shortly after. In January 2017, Jacatia Pawa, a 44-year-old mother of two, who worked as a domestic helper in Kuwait, was executed by hanging for a crime she did not commit. Pawa was not the typical household service worker because she was a college graduate with a degree in banking, finance, and was a sister to a retired police officer and a lieutenant colonel. And yet, she too was not spared. The Pawa case spanned three administrations, from President Gloria Arroyo to President Aquino and to President Duterte. From the time she was arrested in 2007, Pawa, unassisted by a lawyer during the investigation, was found guilty and sentenced to death, even if not an iota of evidence linked her to the crime. She had no motive. In fact, her contract was renewed. Seven more OFWs since Jacatia Pawa followed that year. Adalina Suminaw, a domestic worker from Bucaynon, was killed in Kuwait in 2012, which at first was declared a suicide until the Philippine Embassy showed that her death was caused by the blows she received from her employer. Receptionist Juby Montesoso was found dead after falling from the 8th floor of a building in Kuwait that authorities also claimed as suicide. In October 2010, the decomposing body of 33-year-old OFW Jenny De Chosa was discovered in between the air conditioning units on the roof of the Kuwait International Grounds. Fatima Maulana of Cotabato, a domestic worker, was raped and killed in Kuwait desert in 2008. What happened to these who survived? Mr. Speaker, for those who have escaped death, they live to tell their story so that we know that we may listen and act. And yet, for others, they may not be alive but are languishing in prison for a crime they did not commit. Some who were fortunate to come home alive and in one piece may not be so lucky, and after all, because their misery in Kuwait could have scared from death, scared them from death. Marjulie Lizada, who started working in Kuwait in October 2016, lived to tell a story that the abuse started during the first months of her work. At that time, employers forcibly removed her tunnels and was also raped and sexually abused. In a Los Angeles Times interview in 2006, it was revealed that runaway matriarch promote overseas employment as a means to sustain economic growth and national development, and if ever, the government shall only allow the deployment of OFWs to countries where their rights are guaranteed and protected without compromise. The Commission on Human Rights reminded the government that labor protection can't be to fight employment. The number of OFWs who worked abroad during the period April to September 2017 was estimated at 2.3 million, and their combined cost remittances in 2017 rose to $31.3 billion. Despite the significant contributions of our OFWs over the years, there is still no single agency in the government high enough to be on a department level that attends to their needs. In 2015, there were about 207 Filipinos in Kuwait, of which 198 were temporary migrants and 84%, or almost 170,000, were household workers. Sadly though, we have allowed this employment, notwithstanding that Kuwait labor laws for domestic worker is a claim because it is weaker than the main labor laws that govern Kuwait. Mr. Speaker, the truth is, Filipino household workers in Kuwait suffer harsh working conditions and are raped under the so-called Kavala system. Under the Kavala Kuwait sponsorship system, the employer or the sponsor becomes the owner of the worker. The Kavala system treats our OFWs as slaves and as properties. Mr. Speaker, how many more deaths must we mourn? How many more brutalities must we endure? How many more grief and misery must we suffer? We have gone beyond second chances. If anything must be done at all, it should be retribution and repatriation. The government must impose a total ban on the deployment of OFWs in Kuwait. Mr. Speaker, let us all unite to stop and impose a total ban on the deployment of overseas foreign workers in Kuwait. Mr. Speaker, one death is too many. Marami pong salamat, Mr. Speaker.
Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no members who wishes to interpret the Honorable Arenas, I move that we refer the, refer the speech of, I'm sorry, yes, Honorable Brosas?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, just a few questions.
What is the pleasure?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, just a few questions with regards to the privileged speech of our good representative from Pangasinan, Congresswoman Arenas.
Mr. Speaker, I move therefore that we recognize the Honorable Arlene Brosas for the interpretation.
Yes, but we have to ask the permission of the Congresswoman from Pangasinan. Are you willing to answer questions?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Proceed.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, Madam Congresswoman Arenas, we are really thankful for the speech.
Yun nga po eh, ako na po mismo ang pumupunta sa Foreign Affairs para hingian ng konting hustisia, pero hanggang ngayon po ay wala pa po tayong sagot. Kaya hinihingi ko din po ang tulong ng ating colleagues dito sa kongreso para naman mabigyan ng pansindal. Pagdating ng ataol, madadariyo, kinabukasan, wala na po yun. Kaya marami pong salamat, Honorable Arlene Brosas.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, Madam Congresswoman, alam po natin na wala talagang nakukuha ang hustisia 'yung mga migrante na may kaso, lalong-lalo na po itong pinakaresent na si Konstancia Dayag. At kamakailan ay si Salvez Zilabo, napareho pong mula sa IRecruit, the same recruitment agency po sila. So ibig sabihin nananatili na hindi talaga nakukuha ng hustisia ng mga migrante na namamatay mula sa ibang bansa, 'yung kailangan nilang hustisia. Gusto ko lang pong iquote 'yung isa sa mga panawagan ng migrante sa kaugnay sa pagkatay, no? At paghingi ng hustisia ng, isa sa kanilang mga nakasama, ang pamilya na ni Konstancia Dayag. Ito po 'yung kanilang hiling. Sinasabi nila na, isang taon, inquote, isang taon makalipas mapirmahan ang MOU sa pagitan ng Kuwait at Pilipinas, walang dinanas ang ating mga kababayan doon kundi iba 'yung pangalipin, pambababoy, at pagsasamantala. Sabi nila, tiyakin dapat ang agarang hustisia sa pagkatay ni Conny Dayag, ibasura ang kasalukuyang MOU at lumikha ng panibago na magtitiyak ng pananagutan sa employer at gobyerno ng Kuwait at Pilipinas. Opmakaranas sila ng papataas na antas ng militanteng pagkilos para ikondena ng husto ng migrante at ng kanilang pamilya ang pangyayaring ito. So, ang kahilingan po ay hindi, specifically hindi total ban. Ang gusto po nila ay magkaroon ng, makasecur ng bilateral treaty with Kuwait na mag-eensure ng accountability ng mga employers at ng dalawang gobyerno mismo na, kung mayroong violation of internationally recognized human rights sa mga migrant workers sa Kuwait, ito ay matigil sa pamamagitan ng bilateral treaty na yun. So yun po 'yung nais kong ipahayag, na nais ipahayag ng representasyong ito. Maraming salamat, Mr. Speaker.
Madam Honorable Brosas, 'yan pong iniintay ko. Dali sampung taon na po akong naglalabi para lamang tulungan itong poor OFWs. Ang dalawa pong aking witness ay namatay na, pero DFA po, hanggang ngayon ay walang ginagawa. Nakabot na po kami sa korte sa Pasay at nadulungan din po ako ng ating mahal na Congressman Emmy Calixto Robiano na napakalun sila ng warrant of arrest. Pero hanggang ngayon po ay sige pa rin po sila ng tanggap at tanggap ng empleyado at ng aapi pa rin ng OFW. So saan po tayo lahat pupunta? Sampung taon na po 'yan, 'yung pong dalawang witness ay namatay na. Pinalam po natin ang kaso sa Pasay City Court. Meron na pong warrant for the arrest, pero hanggang ngayon po hindi po na implement. Ako po mismo ang nakikiusap sa DFA. Kaya po siguro, kailangan natin ang mas matinding batas para hindi na magpadala. Dali, Mr. Speaker, from this humble representation, one death is too many, and an injury to one is an injury to all. We are in grief and misery. Tulungan po ninyo kami. Kayo na po ang hiningan namin ng tulong, at marami pong salamat, Honorable Brosas, na kayo po ay nakikisa sa akin dito sa kosa na ito. Hindi ko po 'yan makakalimutan habang buhay ko. Marami pong salamat.
Yes, one last, Mr. Speaker.
Please proceed.
Kami po ay tumututol din sa Labor Export Policy Program ng Gobyerno hangga't hindi po talaga nagkakaroon ng mga trabaho dito sa loob mismo ng Pilipinas. Talagang makakatulong sa ating mga kababayan na manatili sila dito kapiling ng kanilang pamilya. Mahihirapan po talaga tayo kasi minsan, personal choice talaga ng ating mga kababayan na pumunta at mga ibang bayan para magkaroon po ng, kahit sapat na sweldo, may pangtusto sa pamilya. At ang kailangan po dun talaga ay maayos na ekonomiya ng ating bansa na kapagbibigay at ng trabaho sa ating mga kababayan. Yun po 'yung, yun po 'yung magre-resolba doon sa pangangailangan ng ating bayan. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you din po, Mr. Speaker.
Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I would like to recognize the Honorable Manuel Sagarberia of the 2nd District of Negroes Oriental for his interpretation.
The gentleman from the 2nd District of Negroes Oriental is recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Good afternoon. I would just like to ask the proponent of the resolution a question because she said she is for total banning of deployment of employees to Kuwait. Are you just trying to refer only for domestic help or actually for everyone, including engineers, male nurses for that matter? So I just want to be clarified.
Ang sabi ko po, household Filipino women, household helpers.
That's all, Mr. Speaker.
Kasi yun din po ang final ko na cage against them, 'yung household Filipino female OFWs.
So in other words, engineers, male nurses, and for that, that sort of will be allowed to work?
Pero siguro din po, huwag nating gawing masyadong madali para din naman makaroon ng respeto sa ating mga OFW na sumakabilang buhay na po. Tama po namam po yun. 'Yung mga engineers, professional, parang medyo okay sila. Pero siguro po, para meron tayong konting leverage, medyo hingiin pa natin 'yung more, more stricter laws that will not, huwag silang apin dahil meron din pong lalaki na inape dahil po naman ang wife namam po ang nagkagusto sa kanya. Kaya ganun din po yun. Marami pong salamat, Honorable colleague.
Okay, that's all, Mr. Speaker. Thank you very much.
Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no other members who wishes to interpolate, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Baby Arenas and including the interpretations to the Committee on Rules. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Yeah, there is a motion to refer the privileged speech of Representative Jose Marie Arenas to the Committee on Rules. In objection, there being none, the motion is carried. Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, next to avail of the privilege hour is the Honorable Emmy De Jesus of the Partilese Gabriela. So move, I move that we recognize the Honorable.
Representative Emmy De Jesus.
Maraming salamat, Mr. Speaker. Magandang hapon po sa ating lahat. At nais ko rin bigyan ng pagkilala ang mga manggagawa na naririto ngayon sa ating tenaryo upang pakinggan ang napakahalagang paninindigan na nais naming ipaabot. Narito po ang mga manggagawa ng foremost at mga kinatawan mula sa kilusan ng manggagawang kababaihan. Nanais din na bigyan ng diin ang aming paninindigan kaugnay ng isang nakakabahala at nakakapanlinlang na panukalang batas.
Ang salita pong endo para sa katulad ko na magtatapos na ng termino ay kaswala, naman na pwede nating magamit. Pero kapagka sa mga manggagawa, ordinaryong manggagawa na biktima ng kontraktualisasyon, malinaw. Na ito ay nangangahulugan ng gutom, legale, paghinto sa eskwela ng mga anak, kawalang katiyakan sa kabuhayan. At kanina narinig natin ang speech ni Congresswoman atita Baby Arenas. At malinaw na sa dinami-dami ng mga kaso nakita natin na isa sa sinusuong ng mga kababaihan na walang handap buhay dito ay ang pangingibang bayan na punong-puno ng vulnerabilidad at marami ang nagiging biktima ng ibat-ibang anyo ng karahasan. Malinaw po ang kahilingan ng mga manggawang. Lalo na ng mga manggawang kababaihan, dagdag na sahod at magkaroon sana ng isang pambansang minimum na sahod. At higit sa lahat, pagwawakas ng kontraktualisasyon. Pero ito pong Seventeenth Congress, niratsada ang Senate version and security of tenure bill nitong nakaraang linggo at nais kong ipahayag, ano ba ang kabuluhan ito para sa maraming manggawang? Ang Senate version na ito, or Senate version eighteen twenty-six ay nagliligalisan na sa aktwal at alamak ng sistema ng kontraktualisasyon. Kaya para sa amin, hindi ito dapat tawaging security of tenure. Insecurity ang ginagawa dito para sa mga manggawang. Sapinsapi na pangungontrata ang idudulot nito imbes na maging regular at diretso nakukunin para sa isang negosyo. Iiral pa rin ang manpower agencies at contractors. At ito ang malupit, ito ang magsusupply ng murang lakas pagawa sa mga malalaking negosyante. Sa madaling salita para sa security ng tubo ng malalaking negosyo, ang security of tenure bill. At hindi para sa katiyakan sa trabaho ng mga manggawang. Magiiwas po sayo dito ang mga kapitalista sa pagreregular sa mga manggawang. At nababalatuhan pa ang mga manpower, nababalatuhan ang mga kontratista ng kita mula sa lakas pagawa ng manggawang. Katulad ng kaso ng mga manggawang naririto. Mabigat ang kanilang panawagan. Siguro kung sila ang pagsasalitain natin ngayon, ngayong hapong ito. Kapos ang maghapon na ito para lamang ipahayag 'yung ibat-ibang kaso, kung paanong sa pinabahaba ng kanilang pag-i-stay doon sa pagawaan bilang kontraktwal, palipatlipat. Ano ang, ano ang kalagayan ngayon, ganun pa rin. Hirap at walang katiyakan sa buhay. Ibinasura rin ng Senate Bill eighteen twenty-six ang terminong usually necessary or desirable. Pinalitan ito nand directly related to the principal business bilang isa sa pamantayan ng pagtukoy ng labor only contracting. Isinantabi nito ang mayamang jurisprudence na ng korte kaugnay ng usually necessary or desirable. Kung saan may mga naging kaso na at nagtagumpay na rin. Kaya 'yung kayang lumusot sa batas ng isang malaking negosyante kapag sinabi niyang hindi niya empleyado ang mga manggawang kontraktwal dahil iba ang principal na negosyo niya, eto na, makakalusot at makakalusot. Ang lalong makakalusot ang malalaking negosyante. Mr. Speaker, masisindak ba ang mga kapitalista sa nakasaad na parusa sa mga lalabag ng security of tenure bill? Palagay ko mumu lamang ang limang milyon na maximum na administratibo na multa ko para sa dambohalang tubo. Katulad nga ng isang pagawaan ng foremost, Sumifro na, at iba pang malaking negosyante na umiiwa sa direktang regularisasyon ng mga manggawang. Seryoso at matapat ang Gabriela Women's Party sa aming panawagan na babae, bata, at bayan ipaglaban. Aktibo kami, noong ito ay tinatalakay sa kumite. Aktibo kami na ipasok sa panukala ang tunay na security of tenure na magwawakasana sa kontraktualisasyon. At noong ang kasama ko sa Kongreso, mula sa aming partido si kinatawan Arlene Brosas ay masasama sa Bay Cameral. Seryoso kami na naghanda para maipasok din ano pa ang kailangang baguhin doon sa Senate version. Ngunit sa kasamaang palad, binasa ang liham ng kumite na nagsasabing tinatanggap na ng buo ang version ng Senado. Kaya sa esensya, nabaliwala rin po ang version ng camera na pinagbuhusan din ng considerasyon mula din sa input ng ibat-ibang organisasyon ng manggawang. Mr. Speaker, ang pagtanggap din po dito ng Senate version ay hindi rin nagkaroon ng mahabang talakayan. Sana, kung nabigyan ng pagkakataon, ang Bay Cam maigigiit sana ng aming kinatawan sa Bay Cam. Ano pa ang kailangan para magkaroon ng higit na lugar ang pagkilala sa mga manggawang? Ang nakakabahala sa lahat, nagsasabatas tayo ng panukala sa pangkabuoan, malaking pagtatras talaga ito sa masahol ng kalakaran ng umiiral ng kontraktualisasyon na naririana ang Department Order one seventy-four at Executive Order fifty-one. Eto, itong House Bill na ito ay magiging siya na, no? Ang mag-susupersede na, at lalong magbibigay ng legalisasyon sa kontraktualisasyon. Ang isa pang nakakabahala, baka itong panukalang ito ay maipakete na ang tunay, no? Na security of tenure. Ang nais naming sabihin sa payugtong ito, kahit na pirmanan ng Pangulo ang security of tenure na 'yan, ito ay magpapanitili lamang ng sistemang mapagsamantala para patuloy na pababain ang sahod ng mga manggawang. At nawawalan talaga ng tunay na sigurad, 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 siguridad sa trabaho dahil sa sistemang kontraktualisasyon. Kaya, Mr. Speaker, ang nakakabahala pa rin, mahaba ang hamon sa mga organisador ng manggawang. Pero kaninang umaga lamang, ang mga magigiting na organisador ng mga manggawang ay tinatapatan ng karahasan. Bumungad kanina ang balita na isang organisador, si Mauchmaga ay hinatulan na ng guilty sa gawagawang kaso. Kahapon, pinaslang naman ang isang leader manggawang sa kabite, si Denis Sequenia habang nakikipagpulong sa mga manggawang. Ito, ito po ang malupit na sistema na bahagi na dapat ang Senado, ang Leheslatura ay magaambagman lang para baguhin ang kalagayan ng mga manggawang. Ngunit dahil sa pagpapasa ng Senate version ng House Bill kaugnay ng security of tenure na sabi nga namin, tinatawag naming insecurity of tenure. Lalong winasak nito ang pagkilala sa papel, ang mahalagang papel ng manggawang sa ating lipunan. Kaya naniniwala pa rin kami, ang lakas para baguhin ang kalagayan ng mga manggawang ay sa pag-oorganisa at sa patuloy na pagigigit ng kanilang karapatan. Muli, nalilindigan kami na ang House Bill ay isang ilusyon, isang pandilin lang sa, ng pagwawakas ng kontraktualisasyon. Yun lamang. Maraming salamat, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Brosas for her manifestation.
Congressman Brosas is recognized.
Yes, Mr. Speaker. Yes, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, dapat po ay konferi tayo ng magaganap na Bay Cameral Conference kaugnay dito sa House Bill six nine zero eight and Senate Bill one eight two six. Mr. Speaker, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Sinabi po natin kanina na tayo ay supposedly Bay Cameral Conferi ng House Bill six nine zero eight and Senate Bill one eight two six. But apparently, inadapt po natin dito sa Kongreso ng walang courtroom last time ang pagpasa ng version ng Senate Bill. Sinasabi po namin na napakaraming contentious provisions doon mula sa House Bill at Senate Bill, meron pong total of nine na contentious provisions. Pero sasabihin ko nila lang po 'yung ilan sa mga mahalaga na pinapahabol talaga ng mga unyon ng mga malalaking unyon ng mga manggawang. Para matiyak po na ito ay maging, maging panlaban sa kontraktualisasyon na meron tayo ngayon. Unang-una, 'yung pagbabago po doon sa termino, sa Labor Code ng usually necessary and desirable into directly related sa version ng Senate Bill one eight two six sa tingin po namin ay magpapalala sa kondisyon ng kontraktualisasyon. Bakit? Dahil po may mga naipanalo na ang mga manggawang na jurisprudence. Mga cases po kung saan nagamit 'yung usually necessary and desirable. At magiging mas lalong malaki ang liway ng mga employers kapagka sinabing directly related lang. Kasi ibig sabihin po pwedeng sabihin ng mga employers o ng mga may-ari ng negosyo na hindi naman directly related, so makakatakas po sila sa ganong paraan. Second, sa usapin po ng fine or penalties. Kami po inilaban namin na magkaroon ng sanction ng pagkakulong dahil ang meron lang po sa version ng Senate ay a fine of up to five million against any LOC o 'yung tinatawag na labor only contracting. Kung five million lang po, madali lang po sa mga employers na bayaran yun. Manilang sa kanila yun eh, no? Kaya iba po kapagka meron tayong sanction ng pagkakulong para madeter talaga natin 'yung mga magmamalabis o mga abuso sa mga manggawang natin. So, Mr. Speaker, gusto ko pong itala for the record na dapat nagkaroon ng Bay Cameral Conference. At doon po ay napag-usapan 'yung napakaraming contentious provisions na ito. At narinig ang boses ng ating mga manggawang lalong-lalo na ang kilusang Mayo Uno at ang iba pang mga manggawang natin na mga organisasyon. Para nang sa ganun, natiyak po ang kanilang boses doon. Maraming salamat, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no members wishes to interpolate. I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Emmy De Jesus to the Committee on Rules. So move, Mr. Speaker.
There's a motion to refer the privilege speech of Representative Arlene Brosas to the Committee on Rules.
Jesus. Emmy De Jesus.
Of Representative Emmy De Jesus to the Committee on Rules. There being no objection, the motion is carried. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, next to avail of the privilege hour is the Honorable Juliette Hui of the Second District of Misamis Oriental. I move that we recognize the Honorable.
You are recognized.
Mr. Speaker, I rise on a matter of honor and privilege. The honor and dignity of Misamis Oriental, its residents, and of the entire country. The repeated dumping and importation of solid waste and other waste from other countries must stop. I am calling for a total ban on the importation of all forms of waste in their solid, liquid, organic, inorganic, and other forms. To make this happen, I file this morning House Bill nine two zero seven. In these last session days of the Seventeenth Congress, this bill is a symbolic principle and loud no against any further insult to our national honor and violations of our environmental laws. House Bill nine two seven is partly meant as a policy recommendation to the executive branch of our national government because it has provisions that can be provisionally implemented through executive orders, administrative orders, or department-level directives and memoranda. Mr. Speaker, I will refile this measure in the Eighteenth Congress as I have received by the grace of God and the will of the voters of Misamis Oriental, a new mandate to serve them in the Eighteenth Congress. Our country is awash with solid waste, liquefied waste, and toxic waste. Our rivers, lakes, seashores, and seas are massively polluted by this waste. Our cities, factories, and homes produce garbage like there's no tomorrow. We already have a lot of our own garbage. We certainly need not import anymore. The more garbage we produce, the shorter and more polluted our tomorrows will become. Mr. Speaker, the members of this Congress have not been remiss in their duty. There are at least twenty-one pending bills addressing the massive problems of solid waste management and pollution we face. We have approved some of these bills on third and final reading and sent them to the Senate. I am hoping more of the bills pending at committee can be passed by the House before at the end of the Seventeenth Congress. So that those bills need not restart at square one in the Eighteenth Congress. Mr. Speaker, as we are all aware by now, there are still over five thousand tons of garbage yet to be returned to South Korea. Add to that the so-called municipal waste, processed fuel from Australia, and another shipment from Hong Kong. All these three importations landed at the port of Taguluan in Misamis Oriental. And the intended destination was the Philippine Veterans Investment Development Corporation, FIBDEC Industrial State, handling the jurisdictions of the towns of Taguluan and Villanueva in Misamis Oriental, in the Second District of my congressional. Mr. Speaker, this repeated incident show the utter and shameless disregard of national dignity and publicly outcry against all imported garbage by the FIBDEC authorities. Mr. Speaker, I call for the immediate resignation of the entire administration of the FIBDEC Industrial State. Specifically, its administrator Franklin Quejano and fourth chief Alfredo Risma. All of them must go. They do not deserve to stay in office any single day more. They have no shame. They have no... They have no shame, they have no honor, they have insulted the residents of Misamis Oriental and the entire country. I call on the Office of the Ombudsman and the Commission on Audit to investigate, motopropue the whole FIBDEC board, as well as the officials and all personnel manning the port of Taguluan. Let us not waste any more public funds paying for the salaries, honoraria, and benefits of these FIBDEC officials who have been treated as sacred cows but have failed the Filipino people. If they refuse to resign, then I will have no recourse but to call for the reduction of the budget of the FIBDEC to one peso and to file a bill calling for the complete and utter abolition of the FIBDEC and its takeover by the Philippine Economic Zone Authority. Mr. Speaker, the FIBDEC has fooled the country enough. The FIBDEC must be abolished. Lastly, the consignees of the shipment of garbage must be held responsible and prosecuted to the fullest extent of the laws. Mr. Speaker, the Philippine consignee of the garbage from Canada is chronic plastic which used to hold office in Barangay Canumay in Valenzuela City. The consignee of the garbage from South Korea is Verdi Soko which has office in Cagayan di Oro City and Cebu City and has officers who reside in Quezon City. Crowdwind consignee of the garbage shipment from Hong Kong listed is having an office in Pasay City. Based on the evidence the Bureau of Customs has gathered, these companies, their officials, and personnel are involved in the importation of garbage. Mr. Speaker, I am requesting our colleague here in the House, including the honorable representatives of Valenzuela City, Cagayan di Oro City, Quezon City, and Pasay City, to help in holding these companies, their officials, and personnel responsible for their complicity in the illegal importation of garbage. Mr. Speaker, I ask the Securities and Exchange Commission, the Department of Trade and Industry, and the mayors of Valenzuela City, Cagayan di Oro City, and Pasay City to immediately provide Congress and the National Bureau of Investigation all the certified true copies of registration documents of all these companies. Mr. Speaker, I ask the Bureau of Immigration to search for and arrest with proper warrants any and all foreign nationals who are officials or employees of these consignees. Mr. Speaker, I also request the DEINR to verify with actual on-site inspections and investigations the assertions of whole same Philippines about the imported garbage meant for them. We need facts and proof, not mere press statement. Our laws must apply to all. We demand justice and accountability. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, to interpolate the Honorable Uy, may we recognize the Honorable Manuel Zubiri of the Third District of Bukidnon.
Congressman Zubiri, you are recognized. Please proceed.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. If the lady wouldn't mind, I just have one or two questions for her and may I manifest my opinion with regards to the matter, Mr. Speaker?
Please proceed.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, I just want to find out who or which countries have their garbage in the Philippines, Mr. Speaker? How many countries?
So far, right now, it's from South Korea and Hong Kong in the Taguluan port of Misamis Oriental.
And I believe there was a garbage from Canada that is being sent back to Canada as I speak, Mr. Speaker. So we're looking at three or four countries. Mr. Speaker, I'm just wondering, no? Because right now, we're having a difficult task in waste management. We have our own challenges. Tapos ginagawa po tayong basurahan na maibang bansa. Hindi po tayo papayag dyan. I think we as Filipinos should defend whatever it is we need to defend, especially in these countries bringing in their waste to our country. Let us not allow this to happen, Mr. Speaker. Thank you very much, ma'am. I missed, I think, one meeting you had in Cagayan di Oro because I am just behind you. I am from Bukidnon and you are in front of me. And definitely, if you cannot contain that, that I may find that garbage in my province, which I will not allow. So this, Mr. Speaker, I just want to let our other countries, no? Other nations know that please don't make us their trashcan. Hindi po kami basurahan ng mundo. We have our own challenges. And please, I request and I ask them to respect, to respect us as a nation and we are not their dumping ground. So, Mr. Speaker, let us make this clear that whoever sends their garbage here in the Philippines, it will be sent back to them. So that's all, Mr. Speaker. This is my manifestation and I'm here to support Congresswoman Juliet for her efforts in making sure that this does not happen again. Because we, at least we from Mindanao, will not allow this to happen again. Marami pong salamat, Mr. Speaker. Thank you.
Thank you, Congressman Zubiri. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no other members wishes to interpolate. I move that we consider or refer the speech of the Honorable Juliet Uy and the speech of the Honorable Zubiri to the Committee on Rules. So move, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to refer the privileged speech of Congresswoman Juliet Uy to the Committee on Rules. There being no objection, the motion is carried. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, last to avail of the privilege are is the Honorable Rico Heron of the Parte list Agap. I move that we recognize the Honorable Heron for his privileged speech.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Isang maganda at maliwalas sa nagabi po sa inyong lahat. My esteemed colleagues, the representative of the Filipino people, sa lahat ng ating mga kababayan, sanman po kayo naruron at sa sektor ng kooperatiba, kung saan ang naging panukala nating bataas ay nakatuon. Before we bow out from this 17th Congress and segue into the 18th Congress, I would like to thank you for your approval and ratification of the Conference Committee Report on House Bill 9051, an act reorganizing and strengthening the Cooperative Development Authority, repealing the proposed Republic Act Number 6939, creating the Cooperative Development Authority as our legacy and munting papanas sa cooperative sector sa ating mga kababayan, in the domestic front, and those seeking livelihood in other parts of the world who are also into cooperatives to our constituency and to ourselves. Ang cooperative sector ay isa sa mga aspeto ng bansa natin that is subject to and needs government regulation through the government Cooperative Development Authority. This measure recognizes, intend, and updates the capacity of the Cooperative Development Authority to regulate registered cooperatives to ensure that it develops its potential in serving its members and the community as a whole. It provides for a consultation mechanism with the cooperative sector for the formulation of regulatory measures and program for the full implementation of Republic Act 9520 of the Philippine Cooperative Code of 2008. Ang kwento po ng Republic Act 6939, which created the Cooperative Development Authority in 1990, was that isa siyang kakambal na bataas ng Republic Act 6938. Ang Cooperative Code of 1990 na naamiyandahan nung 2008 at kinikilala ngayon bilang Republic Act 9520, which means naiwan na ng Republic Act 9520 ang kakambal niyang bataas na Republic Act 6939. Itong ngayon ang ating tinrabaho upang ma-update at masinkronize ang dalawang Republic Act para ma-implement ng buong-buo ang Republic Act 9520. This legislative action on the reorganization and strengthening of the existing Cooperative Development Authority Charter, Republic Act 6939 in 1999 and in 2000, was not meant to be and was actually stalled for seven congresses, from the 10th to 16th Congress. This 17th Congress, however, will not be part of the statistics that bypassed action on the proposed new Cooperative Development Authority law dahil naipasanap po natin ito sa ating kasalukuyang kongreso. The time is always under our wads. The situation and circumstances in the cooperative sector has changed and many aspects have moved on in response to the needs of the sector, changes that should be addressed by a law through the Cooperative Development Authority. A good 18 years stand in between the so-called twin laws since the present Cooperative Development Authority Charter became a law. There's a need to cloth and equip with the updated and appropriate powers, functions, and responsibilities to completely respond to the changing.
See you tomorrow. May ano bukas ako, the SWD, I might not be able to... 10 o'clock, 10 o'clock. Kayo na lang, kasi nasa Senate ako. Just see you tomorrow.
Maganda 'yung sagot mo kaya 'no? Kung gusto mo sa posisyon, yo rin ako biglang ring. Nakinong panay, chairman, ano? Sabi ni Ako, that is the opinion of Congressman Chai, which I recorded. It is not an opinion, it is the position of the legislature to Article Six, Section Five. Na, ako ang mga respektibo, startin' clean ako, ipasa ko na ang regular sessions from the zona of the president up to thirty days before the next one.
Icheck mo nga, dito sa...
There's a motion that we adopt Senate Bill Number Two One Two Four as an amendment to House Bill Number Nine Zero Two Three. Do I hear any objection? There being none, motion is carried. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, the House and the Senate have approved on third reading House Bill Number One Six Five and Senate Bill Number Two Two Three Four respectively, authorizing the sale of parcels of land in barangay Cruzna Ligas, Quezon City to its illegitimate and qualified residents. We have been informed that the Committee on Housing and Urban Development, the sponsor of House Bill Number One Six Five as well as the author thereof, are in concurrence with the provisions of Senate Bill Number Two Two Three Four. In accordance with our rules, Mr. Speaker, I move that we adopt Senate Bill Number Two Two Three Four as amendment to House Bill Number One Six Five. So move, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion that we adopt Senate Bill Number Two Two Three Four as an amendment to House Bill Number One Six Five. Is there any objection? There being none, the motion is carried.
Mr. Speaker, we are in receipt of the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee report on the disagreeing provisions of House Bill Number Six Eight Four and Senate Bill Number One Two Two Five amending Republic Act Number Fifty Three as amended, otherwise known as an act to exempt the publisher, editor, or reporter of any publication from revealing the source of published news or information obtained in confidence by including within its coverage journalists from broadcast, news agencies, and internet publications. In accordance with our rules, Mr. Speaker, I move that we ratify the said Bi-Cameral Conference Committee report. So move, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to approve...
To ratify.
To ratify the said Bi-Cameral Conference Committee report on the provisions of House Bill Number Six Eight Four and Senate Bill Number One Two Two Five, amending Republic Act Number Five Three as amended, otherwise known as an act to exempt the publisher, editor, or reporter, or any publication from revealing the source of published news or information obtained in confidence by including within its coverage journalists from broadcast, news agencies, and internet publication. Is there any objection? There being none, the motion is carried.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend session.
One-minute suspension.
Paka may kulang lang. Isa o dalawa.
Ano sabi ni Brusas? Ano sabi ni Brusas?
Siya ko kontra sa Cruzna Ligas eh. Nasali si Anko. Sabi mo na madali ko. Thank you sir.
Seven monthed.
Isip pa sa isip ko. Kasi ko hindi.
Oo, nagkain naman ang housing. Ginawa naman sa housing.
Parang sasabi ko siya, 'yung protest na segmente point two, paka ang contract. Hindi sayo, kahit na edity, paka edity, demolist.
Panga alam po, ano na magyari sa San Diego? Di balitaan. Anong tayo sa San Diego?
San罗Kai, ma-tryan mo. Pero, 'yun kasi, long before our time to tryan, ganun, at tayo magagawain. At tayo magagawain.
Pinasa din sa Cruzna Ligas.
Sabi mo sa kanya.
Sa gitang pulo ko. Kumahalin ako.
Angasin.
...
We can change our lyrics if we defend here. Is it personal? We have a lot of different ideas. What time the most passionate person? The reason for... I don't follow. What do you think of this war? Check. The full state. There's not actually more than... Just to...
Supergirl, what's that? That's your one. And that's a... Communication. Communication, communication. What's the question of him? I don't know. Or of him. Effect as well.
Uh, verbally, it's important.
Person on the person.
Yeah, very, very hard.
So.
But, uh, I'm going to tell you this one. From present as a floor. Who do now my question? Then I will... Then I will play. Should be corporate or play?
So. About yourself. That's it. How? So.
So. So. But, uh, it is... Yeah. But. Yeah. But. They should... Yeah. But. And then by... Resolution. But. Can I? So. So. So.
Can you consider?
I know. I would do that.
And I'm... But I'm...
Me, uh, so that I mean, I am like what? Must do with the...
Okay. Exactly.
But you can tell you're actually... This is patient.
Uh, what's your...
For me, for me, I'm...
It's a question. So. Number one.
Uh. That's all, uh... I'm really pleased. I'm just... No. That was from my... I'm... You put the thing... But it's the... But it's the... This is the... Claro, yeah, but claro.
Claro.
You put it in the... The one that's the same, and that is the... But it's... Really, it's the one that... Maybe they want to hear that. That was my thought.
Ah.
You can buy it. I'm watching this house. You don't want that.
You can't.
This is the white circle. I see this. What? Uh? Yeah. And look, that's what I think. Uh, you start thinking that... Why, it's the... Then it does. And I, claro, yeah, claro. It's not, claro. Sounds like...
What?
So. Uh, I feel... So, I need one. So, I need one. To progress more than this.
No. Thank you. For tomorrow's... Just.
Uh, yeah, that's...
How was it?
Yeah. You want to say that last time, the moment, yeah? Is it the name, that? Was it? Well, I just don't know what to do, yeah?
Okay.
Okay. Okay, well, you can do that, sir.
Pass on.
I'm gonna... Again on?
Yeah, what can I do?
All right, so... Can you see the point? Guru, you can stand before. I'll, I'll, I'll call the guys. I'll take care of that. Okay, see you then. Okay, that good to hear. Come on. Do you do it, though? Maluke? Does fit, does fit.
.....................................................................
...................................................
Ito.
That's a.
Majority leader, the majority leader. Uh, when I'm speaker, I mean, take up the position of business.
Inaalam nami kung may session pa sila o wala eh. Kasi yung tinatake nila, mga lalo na iba na lokal na. Patapos. Alam mo na nami kung mag suspend sila ngayon. That is until tomorrow, nah? That's. That's. Oh, what? What?
Oh, you know, I read it. San, Madjo. Oh, my, I'm going to. When you. When you. If I go, I go. Na-stress yung pa-amo. They're killing. Huh? Here, ito, I'm going to. Asama sa. Ito. Asama sa rehab.
No, ready.
Session is resumed, majority leader.
Another speaker, I move for additional reference of business.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, the motion is granted. Majority leader. And the secretary general is directed to read the title of the measure.
Additional reference of business, Bill's on first reading, House Bill 9207. An act establishing total ban on the import, export of waste, providing means for its enforcement, appropriation, and other purposes. Representative Uy Julieta.
To the committee on ecology.
House Bill number 9208, a not converting the Quezon Medical Center in Lucena City, Quezon Province, to a regional hospital to be known as Quezon Regional Hospital. Representative Suarez.
To the committee on health.
Messages from the senate, message dated May 29, informing the house that on May 28, the senate approved conference committee report of the bicameral conference on the disagreeing provisions of senate bill number 2098 and house bill 6276.
To the committee on rules.
Message dated May 29, informing the house of representatives that on May 28, the senate approved conference committee report on the disagreeing provisions of senate bill 1950 and house bill number 8869.
To the committee on rules.
Message dated May 29, informing the house that designated conference on February 8, to the bicameral conference on senate bill number 1255 and house bill 684.
To the committee on rules.
Committee report, report of the committee on transportation, committee report 1327 on house bill 9209.
To the committee on rules.
Committee report, report of the committee on government enterprise privatization and committee on public works.
To the committee on rules.
Report of the committee on government enterprises and privatization, committee on public works and highways on house resolution number 2593.
To the committee on rules. Majority leader.
Madam speaker, we are in deceit of the bicameral conference committee report on disagreeing votes on house bill number 8179. In accordance with our rules, I move that we ratify the said bicameral conference committee report.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, the motion is granted. Session suspended until Tuesday 3pm.